Welcome to the Muskogee County School District, located in beautiful Columbus, Georgia. With nearly thirty thousand students in fifty-six schools, centers, and programs, we're a beacon of educational excellence where you are known, valued, and inspired. We are proud to be named one of Forbes' 2024 Best Employers for Women and Best in State Employers. This recognition highlights our commitment to fostering an inclusive, equitable workplace that values diversity and supports professional growth. Our five thousand five hundred dedicated professionals, led by our Board of Education and Superintendent Dr. David Lewis, are committed to equipping and inspiring every student to achieve unlimited potential. We believe in the power of education as a community effort and a pathway to a brighter future. We are the Muskogee County School District.
We celebrate Veterans Day on the anniversary of the armistice that ended World War I, the armistice that began on the eleventh hour of the eleventh day of the eleventh month. The timing of this holiday is quite deliberate in terms of historical fact. But somehow, it always seems quite fitting to me that this day comes deep in autumn when the colors are muted and the day seem to invite contemplation. It is, in a way, an odd thing to honor those who died in defense of our country, in defense of us, in wars far away. The imagination plays a trick. We see these soldiers in our mind as old and wise, but most of them were boys when they died, and they gave up two lives, the one they were living and the one they would have lived. When they died, they gave up their chance to be husbands and fathers and grandfathers. They gave up their chance to be revered old men. They gave up everything for our country, for us, and all we can do is remember, "I will not fail thee nor forsake thee." In memory of those who gave the last full measure of devotion, may our efforts to achieve lasting peace gain strength. Let us make a vow to our dead. Let us show them by our actions that we understand what they died for, strengthened by their courage, hardened by their value, and born by their memory. Let us continue to stand for the ideals for which they lived and died. In the long history of the world, only a few generations have been granted the role of defending freedom in its hour of maximum danger. I do not shrink from this responsibility. I welcome it. I do not believe that any of us would exchange places with any other people or any other generation. The energy, the faith, the devotion which we bring to this endeavor will light our country and all who serve it. We shall pay any price, bear any burden, meet any hardship, support any friend, oppose any foe, to assure the survival and the success of liberty.
Good afternoon. Welcome to our November twelfth board work session. Quite video, quite inspiring to hear those words and remember and celebrate our veterans, I should say. Want to welcome all of our visitors. Of course, we always have Mary Ann Rickner from the museum. Alan Harkness is not here, but in his place is Van Montesqueros, right there. And if we have any principals or anyone from the leadership team of the school, just wave so we can say thank you for all that you do. So we will go right into our public agenda. Today, we have two speakers. We have Ms. Teresa Elamine and Otis Hellstock. Ms. Elamine, while you're making your way, I'll read our disclaimer. All official meetings of the Board of Education shall be open to the press and to the public. However, the board may meet in executive session. Speaker's remarks should be directed to the board and shall be limited to five minutes. Citizens are encouraged to address items on the board agenda or to initiate presentations of issues appropriate for school board consideration. If an individual desires to speak, they may contact the superintendent's office to be placed on the agenda. The board meeting or the work session is not the appropriate place to address either criticisms of particular employees or individual parent complaints when such complaints have not been first addressed or brought to the attention of the appropriate administrator for resolution. Citizens are encouraged to follow the normal channels to address individual parent complaints and/or problems. Ms. Elamine?
Good afternoon, School Board Superintendent. Yeah, it's so great to be on time, Madam Chair. I was determined, so we know it is possible. In August, the building, a village project, held a meeting at Fourth Street Missionary Baptist Church, August fifteenth. That was the meeting which was the Dr. David Lewis Show. He did a great job of explaining how great things are going with the district. And I do want to thank you. We were talking in the hallway about the difference you made, Dr. Lewis. See, in 2011, when I started screaming, "They're in the prison pipeline. They're in the prison pipeline." Lots of out-of-school suspensions. Well, now, there's a police force, and so they're really seriously in the prison pipeline. And I thank Chief Greg Arp for answering my open records request with the list of arrests for all the years he's been chief. We talking serious charges, rape, burglary, et cetera. So they are in the prison pipeline big time. I emailed it to you, the five years Chief Arp has sent me, and it's all connected to the organized crime that's being perpetrated by juveniles in gangs, which is directly related to the poverty and no decent home life. So in nineteen ninety-eight, in Durham, North Carolina, what's happening here now was happening then. There was a gang called Folks. I tried to help a young high school student get out of the gang. And she said, "They beat you in and they beat you out." And she was beat so bad, I couldn't believe how she looked. Her father came from New York and took her back to New York. He said, "I'm taking my baby out of here." But that's how long gang activity in schools has been going on. I see I got two minutes and a few seconds, so I promise not to go over. So tonight, over at the public library, we're going back to our original theme. Madam Chair, in 2011, we packed the library, "Education, Not Incarceration." We're there now. We're back there. So you can see who's speaking tonight at six o'clock. So I will be on time there too, because I'll leave here and go straight there. So I want to thank you for the great jobs you're doing. And those folders I gave you, add that to the folders. So all of you have a folder on building a village, because it really does take a village. And so the people who are speaking, they're the men who are saying, "We've been working on this a long time. We don't know how it got this bad. Well, we're gonna all try to figure it out so we can make it better." Are you feeling me? Because you can't graduate if you're doing this kind of criminal stuff. You just can't. So we're losing. We're losing. So we gotta stop losing. Overwhelmingly, the good students are in the majority, overwhelming. So this is a very small percentage, but it's amazing how much damage a small percentage can do to a city when I'm scared to go out at night. So thank you so much for listening, and I'll see you maybe in December. Thank you. I'm taking next week off. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Elamine. Now we know why you're on time for this meeting. You got another one next door. All right, Mr. Hellstock? Otis Hellstock. All right, now we will go into our presentations. Columbus Board of Tax Assessors?
Yes, tonight, we have Suzanne Whitehouse from the Chief Appraiser from the city to talk to us about the House Bill 581.
Lovely, thank you. Dr. Lewis, Board of -- thanks for having me here this evening. I know there have been a lot of questions. Oh, sure, I'm Suzanne Whitehouse. I'm the Chief Appraiser. There have been a lot of questions about recent legislation that appeared on our ballot. They all passed, and I'm here to kind of give you a brief rundown of what that means. So the biggest one, which is the one we're going to spend the most time on, is House Bill 581, which created a floating homestead exemption on top of the current frozen exemption that we have here, and its corresponding House Resolution 1022, which went by the voters, what was it? I guess just last week, and time flies. And it did pass. So but before we get to that, there was two other measures on the ballot I want to touch on very, very briefly. One was an exemption on personal property. This was increasing the personal property exemption from seventy-five hundred to twenty thousand. This primarily hits small business owners, people who own boats, and people who own aircraft. People's personal household effects are exempt already, so it didn't really affect them. That measure did pass based on last year's numbers. For the school board, the effect is going to be an approximate two-hundred-and-thirteen, two-hundred-and-fourteen thousand dollar reduction in revenue. So just be aware that that is on the horizon. And that was based off of the 2024 Tax Digest numbers, so subject to change for next year, but just a heads up that did pass, and so expect that. The other issue that was on the ballot was the creation of a tax court instead of the tax tribunal. The only things that go to the tax tribunal are public utility appeals and things like QTP, qualified timber. They don't like going to the tribunals, so they wanted an avenue straight into the courts, and the voters did pass that, so they will be able to go straight into a tax court instead of going to the tribunal and then to the Fulton County Superior Court. So now they'll just go to a -- straight to a tax court. So let's talk about House Bill 581. There were a lot of provisions in this bill. We were very excited to see this bill pass, but it also comes with a lot of issues that you're going to have to address as a levying authority and that city council will also have to address. First and foremost is to recognize the dates, January one to March first, and understand that that opt-out period, when we get to talking about it, that is casting concrete. If you decide to opt out and you do not have it to the Secretary of State by March first, you will have missed your window. So what does -- what all's in the bill? So it requires that the rollback rate now go on to the notice of assessment. In the past, that rollback rate was published after the notices of assessment went out as you guys were preparing your levying and all of that. That will now be on the notice of assessment, so you, as a levying authority, will need to certify that to the Tax Commissioner for us to put that estimate on to the notice of assessment. The confusing tax estimate at the bottom is going away to be replaced by the rollback rate. It also is going to remove the sales cap provision. Right now, the law states that the most anybody can pay for their house the following year is what they pay, you know, can be assessed is based on what they paid for it the previous year. So if you purchase your house this year, then it was frozen the next year. That's going away. When you have a hyperinflated market that's increasing year-over-year dramatically, what was happening is is we were freezing values that were below market, and it was affecting the sales ratio studies. It also affected the way the Department of Audits conducted their sales ratio study. Because of that freeze, it artificially caused a sales chase. And that then led them to change their methodology, and I was here just last year asking to appeal a Department of the Audit sales ratio study because we felt that their methodology was incorrect, and it was going to affect our ability to levy on the public utilities. So that is going to change that and hopefully put things back to the way they used to be before the sales cap was put in place. Fingers crossed that that methodology of our Department of Audits will now change to better accurately reflect what's going on in the market. Some other things that it's going to affect is it is going to require that I, as Chief Appraiser, ensure that this countywide revaluation takes place once every three years. Right now, the law suggests it. We have three to six years to accomplish it. This is taking away our six-year and saying, "You will do this within three years." The problem is, is I have fifty percent of the staff necessary in order to accomplish this in three years. I can do it in six, based on the number of staff that I have. Standards are that I should have one field appraiser for every four thousand parcels. I have one field appraiser for every ten thousand parcels. You tell me how I'm going to get this done in three years, and I will take you to dinner. So it's going to be a big issue for us to get this done in three years. But that's where we are. The three-year freeze, as a result of appeals, they did attempt to close some of the loopholes. Right now, if a person goes in to appeal to the Board of Equalization, if they do not prevail, they still get a lock on their value for three years. If the Tax Assessor's has proven right, they get to freeze their value for three years. And so what we had was a lot of appeals that people just wanted their value locked, because they knew values were continuing to go up every year, and they just wanted to be able to shut that down. And so we have people who literally appeal one-third of their properties every single year so they can maintain these locks. That's going away. They will still get locks if they prevail. If we're proven that the Tax Assessor's was incorrect in their valuation, then the taxpayer will get that freeze. But if they're just in there trying to get a lock for three years, they're not going to get that anymore. It's also closing a Superior Court loophole where taxpayers could appeal to Superior Court. They could take their BOE decisions, appeal to Superior Court, and get to pay based on eighty-five percent of their tax bill until that appeal is resolved. And so it closes that loophole and basically says that if they don't come to the table, there's a mandatory settlement conference, and if they don't come to that table in a good-faith effort, they're not going to get that benefit. And we have a lot of them that just don't show up for their settlement conferences, or they walk in the door and they say, "I just want to sign my paper," and they leave. That closes that loophole. They have to be willing to sit down and negotiate with us. All right, let's talk about what everybody wants to hear about, which is the floating homestead. So what this bill does is this creates a statewide floating homestead exemption. The way this homestead exemption is going to work is it's going to establish 2025 as the base year. So if you do not already have homestead on your property and you're placing homestead on your property, 2025 will be your base year value. Whatever the fair market value is for that year, that's the base year value. The state will establish a methodology to determine an inflationary factor that would then be applied year-over-year. They can use a standard CPI if they want, or they can create their own. We don't know where they're going with this. I was at a GWAO conference last week, and we asked Department of Revenue, and they said, "We haven't discussed it. We don't know what methodology we're going to use. We don't know if they're just going to use the standard CPI for the state of Georgia or for our region or how they're going to do this." But they're the ones who are going to establish the inflationary factor that will not be established in the county level. So if one area of the county is So if one area of the county is booming, and another area isn't, they may find, that area that isn't, may find themselves getting an inflationary factor that is not in line with what's going on in their area. This exemption is in addition to, not in lieu of, non-floating exemptions. And by that, I mean, when we apply a homestead exemption, you get to exempt a certain amount of your assessed value from your taxes. So, you have your frozen value. Currently, you have what we refer to as the local value, which is your assessed value at the time that you placed homestead on your property. And then we take off a non-floating exemption off of that. In this case, for a standard homestead, it's $13,500 would come off of that. If you're 65 and over, and your income is under $10,000, that amount increases to $21,500. Those are a local, non-floating homestead exemption. This is in addition to those. The state levels are 2,000, 4,000, 10,000. We have higher-than-that levels. We have 13,500 and 21,500. Counties can opt out of this frozen, this floating homestead if they so desire. That's that time period, January 1 to March 1. It requires that you advertise and hold three public hearings, and that your resolution be in the hands of the Secretary of State no later than March 1. There is a sales tax provision to offset the floating homestead, and what it could potentially do to a Tax Digest, that will not affect Muskogee County, because we already have a frozen homestead here. We already get this, so we don't get another one. It's just the one. So let's talk about the difference between local value and base year value. So, local value, as I've already explained, is anybody that's placed homestead on their property since 1983. It was voted in in '82, and was first put into play in 1983. If you put homestead on your property in 1983, you have what we call a local value. And that is the assessed value at the time that you placed homestead on it. Now, if you've added an addition, the value of that addition's been added to it, that kind of thing. Then you have your fair market value. That's whatever it would sell for on the open market. The base year value is going to be the assessed value for 2025. That will be your, the base year value. Whichever homestead provides the greatest benefit is the homestead that the taxpayer would receive. So somebody who put homestead on their property in 2023, this is going to have zero effect. It is not going to affect them at all, because there is absolutely mathematically impossible for it to be better for them to be on this floating than it is for them to be on the frozen. And that's going to be true with the majority of our taxpayers, because ours is frozen. Ours is not subject to an inflationary factor. So our value, our frozen value does not increase. So for most of our taxpayers, this is going to be a benefit. I have no benefit, it's not going to have any effect. I'm, I'm one step ahead of myself, because I'm already thinking about those 1,100 people that have frozen homesteads that are upside down. So we have about 1,100 taxpayers in the county, who for one reason or another, their fair market value, their assessed value of their fair market value is lower than their frozen value. Now, how can that happen? Well, they could have a fire, as an example. And the year that they have the fire, they still, their homestead stays in place, allowing them an opportunity to rebuild their house. And then when it's rebuilt, they don't get a new local value. They, they get to keep their local value. So that could be one of the situations in that 1,100. And then we still have a few. We, we thought this hyperinflation of '21 and '22 was going to take care of it, but we still have a few that are underwater from when they acquired their properties in 2007, 2008, before the market tanked. And they locked in, they put their homestead on immediately, because the market was increasing. And guess what? They still, they have been paying more tax than what their fair market value would suggest that they would pay, because ours does not have the provision for a reduction. So, in those cases, if you don't opt out, those folks would see a benefit, because it would allow them to then basically reset. And they would get that base year value as opposed to that local value. It's a very small percentage. And for those that have a fire issue, as an example, they're not going to want to switch to the other one. They're going to want to stay on, on their frozen. It may affect, it may help them for one year, but then the very next year, it won't be of any benefit. And I have some examples here to show you. And I have a bunch of different examples, and I'm going to hit them really high level to kind of give you an idea of, of what you're looking at. So this is, this is somebody who has had homestead as an example, and these are, we just kind of use the same sort of basic scenario for each example, so you'll see a lot of numbers that repeat themselves. So this is assuming a homestead was placed on a property prior to the pandemic. And in 2019, when they placed it, it was valued at $280,000, giving them a local value of $112,000. Today's fair market value, $400,000. Their base value then would be $160,000. That's higher than the $112 of our frozen. So whether you opt out or not, their $112 is of greater benefit. So, they're not going to care which homestead is out there. It's not to any benefit to them. The next one is, this is a brand-new homestead. This is somebody that puts their homestead on, so their base year value and their local value match that first year. So it doesn't really matter which one they're on. Where you start to see the difference is in the next subsequent years. And we used 4.5% growth for a couple of years, because that's the average growth in the last 40-some-odd years here in Muskogee County, year over year. Some years better, some years worse, some increase, some decrease. Overall, 4.5% average. And this is kind of a five-year scenario, basically saying, "Hey, we're going to average the same, and then maybe we have a downturn in the market." So you see, we start off with fair market value of $400,000. We got a local value of $160,000. We got a base value of $160,000. Next year, value goes up to 418,000. That's 4.5% growth. Local value stays at $160,000. Base value jumps up to $167,200, based on an inflation rate of 5% set by the state. And we just, we used some imaginary numbers, because we don't know how they're going to do this. But if we have a 5% inflation rate, which is not unheard of, that's what it would look like. So already, that very first year out the gate, you're one year into it, it's already better to stay on the frozen. And then you can see what happens if it dips down. It would have to have a couple of years where it dips down, you know, well below the, the growth rate for it to, all of a sudden, the floating becomes of, of greater benefit. It's not often that we see those kind of dips in value. Most of the time, we see them going up. 2008, you know, the, the tank of 2009, we haven't seen that since. You know, it's, for the most part, we've seen increases. All right, so the next one, this is a homestead with a fire, to kind of give you an idea of, of that example I was, I was just talking about. So, we have a house that was, homestead placed on it in 2019, $280,000. We're back to our original scenario. And it burned. So that first year after it burned, its fair market value is $100,000. The house is gone. That's just the land value. But we leave that homestead, the local value stays in place. It's $112,000. The base value would adjust to $39,000. Then, when they rebuild the house, now our fair market value jumps up to 420, the local value stays the same at 112,000. The value of that improvement, because it's a major improvement year over year, from no house to a new house, now we have that improvement value, and now their base value has jumped up to $165,000. And then the next year, we have a slight reduction, downturn in the market, or whatever, you'll see that the local value still is more beneficial. So it's, it's of a benefit to them to just to stay on the, on the local value. Now, the law says that it would be whichever's more beneficial. So it would, our local value would still stay there, because they have about one year under our value to, to freeze and to rebuild. If they exceed that, then their value gets reset. But if they rebuild within one year and get back into it, then they get to keep that. So you would have that one dip down, and then they'd come back out. All right, homestead with an addition. I just mentioned an improvement on a house. So, when we have a homestead, and this is true under our local value, that somebody puts a, a big addition on, maybe they add a pool, or maybe they, you know, bump out and create a, a fifth bedroom, or a fourth bedroom, or whatever, a big sunroom, whatever. We add the value of that improvement, not the cost of the improvement, the value of the improvement, what that added to the value of that house. We add that to the frozen value. So the frozen value stays, but then that value of that improvement gets tacked on to that. So you can see, in this case, we had an increase in value of $200,000. So they did a big addition. And it added $200,000 to the value of the house. So we take our $112,000, and we add that assessed value of the $200,000 to that $112,000. So we add that $80,000 to that $112,000, and that becomes their new local value. If we do this on the base value method, then we start with the $160,000. We're still going to add that $80,000 to it. And this is still assuming that it was a 2019 homestead freeze. That scenario hasn't changed. So we have a base value of $160,000, we add that $80,000 to it. And you can see what that does. Our $192 local value stays right where it is, once we add that into it. And then you can see that even with the reductions that occur for those couple of years, towards the end of our scenario here, it still has a higher value than the, than the frozen value. So again, our frozen value is of greater benefit to our citizens. So what happens when the local value is greater than the assessment? This is the one scenario where this frozen value, this local, the, sorry, the floating homestead would be of greater benefit to our taxpayer. And I touched on this briefly. This is a, a very small percentage of our taxpayers. And like I said, some of this is fire-related, or, you know, storm damage, you know, that kind of stuff. Tornado rolls through, and it drops a tree on their house, and, you know, those kind of damages, catastrophic damages to a property. So it's not all just they bought at the peak of the market. So a lot of these, this five-year scenario would not even be in play. It would be closer to the previous one of the one-year fire damage. But it does kind of give you an idea of, of what this is designed to do. Let's talk about exemptions overall, and what they mean to the Tax Digest, to levying authorities, and how much actually gets exempted from various exemptions. This is all of them. These are all the exemptions. And I'm not talking about exempt property. I'm not talking about buildings that house schools and, and, you know, government buildings, and nonprofits, churches, that kind of stuff. These are exemptions as defined in the law that we grant to people who apply for them. So it's disabled vets, it's standard homesteads, it's surviving spouses, it's freeport inventory, it's historic, it's brownfield rehabilitation properties, it's conservation use, it's all of those. And this is just a school board number, okay? This isn't the countywide millage. This is just your millage rate, the school board's millage rate. And this is how much revenue is currently being exempted under this. It's a shift. It's, it's being shifted. You set your budget where your budget is. This is what's shifted to other taxpayers to meet your budgetary needs. But it's important to understand that this is the value of these exemptions. And you can see on here, when you look at L1, L2, yeah, L1 and L2 are the, are the two biggies. What those represent, those represent the value of the frozen homestead. That is the difference between the assessed value of the fair market value and that frozen value. That's the amount of that valuation in property that is being exempted from taxation as a result of the, of the, of the frozen homestead. So, somebody puts their house in homestead in 1983, when it was valued at 20-some-odd thousand, and their neighbor, who put theirs on in 2019, when it was valued at $320,000, that, and their house is now worth that $320,000. So we have $300,000 exempted there, the assessed value of that. So that's what that L1 and L2 represent, is that when you look at that, that's how much that property is being exempted. And this is all 40% value, this are, these are assessed values. This is not fair market value, this is assessed. So, what do we have going on? We've got some cleanup that always comes with brand-new legislation. They never get it quite right the first time. There's always stuff that pops up. So, one thing is, is that you, as a levying authority, you certify your rollback rate to the Tax Commissioner's office. And you do that after my notices of assessment already go out. So, this is going to require, if this, this is what's been requested so far, whether this passes in this language, we don't know. It's, it's in this legislative session. Is to require that, that the rollback rate be certified to us Tax Assessors before it gets certified to everybody else, so that we have it available for the notices of assessment. And the thing to remember about the language that's in the bill currently is that it's an estimated rollback rate, because you never know exactly what it's going to be until we know what the appeals are, until we know exactly where the digest ends up, where your budgets end up. That's what determines the actual. So, it's going to be you, as a levying authority, your best guess, is what you'll need to certify to us. The House Bill 581, the floating homestead automatically transfers on death to a spouse. That's not the way the other homesteads are written. It requires that the spouse apply, if they're not already on the deed. We do still have some folks who, maybe the husband owns the property, maybe the wife owns the property, and the spouse isn't on it. So, House Bill 581 transfers that frozen, that, that floating value directly to the spouse. So when the spouse comes in and they say, "Hey, my spouse died. I inherited the property, it's now mine, I'm still living there, and I need my homestead transferred." That allows it. But it doesn't, the other homesteads aren't like that. So this is about cleaning up the language for the other homesteads, so that they're uniform and they match. And then, also, some of the other homesteads have acreage restrictions on them. As an example, here in Muskogee County, our frozen homestead is limited to the two acres that sit under the house. If you have more than two acres, the remainder of that is at fair market value. And it does not, it's not subject to a freeze. So if you happen to have a house sitting on five acres, you get to freeze two of it, and the other three acres are at fair market value. This, it would put in a cap, so that it would be more in line with other homesteads, because there are some that do cap. For us, it still is going to create a trying-to-compare-apples-to-apples situation, because we only freeze the first two. So we're still going to have that issue of trying to determine if they use five, which is where they seem to be leaning towards, is a five-acre cap. It would mean that we would have to figure out, here's the frozen value for the two, add in the value of the three, which we maintain as two separate accounts because of the frozen issue. So we're going to have to figure out a way to how to put our apple back together, so we can compare it to the state's apple of the, of the base value of that acreage, and make sure that we're giving whoever is the, is the, whichever one's the most beneficial, if you all elect to not opt out. That is really the gist of what we have going on here at this point. I don't know if you have any questions, if there's anything I can answer. There is, I can already tell you that we have received the estimate from our chemist system for what it's for what it's going to cost to implement this on the CAMA side, and it's not pretty. So there's going to be a lot of expenses to do this, to, you know, if we don't opt out. But that's a decision for you all to make, I'm not going to give you a recommendation one way or the other, I'm just trying to put the facts before you all.
Regarding that decision, and I know we had something the other night, but I had a work conflict, do we have to do the same thing as the city council?
No, you do not. Each levying authority gets to make their own decision.
Is that not more cumbersome on y'all, that you have two different values for two different levying systems?
It's, this whole bill is going to be cumbersome for the tax assessor's office. We already maintain multiple values. As an example, we maintain a frozen value, we maintain a fair market value, we maintain a conservation use value, we maintain historic frozen values, we maintain brownfield values, and so we already are maintaining a lot of different values. Would it be easier for us if you all opt out? Oh, yeah, it would definitely be easier for us. But what's easier for me is not supposed to influence what you think is the best for yours. We will do whatever we have to do to make this work, that's why we have CAMA systems, and, you know, this isn't the first complex piece of legislation that we'll have had to try and implement in our office, and, you know, we'll just, we'll figure out a way to make the computers work.
Yeah, and I guess the need of that was whether or not we needed to do the same thing as city council. Okay, so I get why this was very beneficial for counties that did not have a freeze. Okay. I'm trying to figure out who gets hurt if we opted out of this.
So who gets hurt if you opt out? Are the approximate 1,100 homeowners that have a situation where they are, they're paying more in tax than the value of their property would indicate they should be, but as I also pointed out, some of them are the result of catastrophic damage. I would have to dig through each one of those 1,100 to tell you which ones were fire damage, storm damage, those kind of things, to tell you which, what the actual percentage was. My initial query just said who's underwater.
And when you, the opt-out decision, how permanent is that?
It's permanent. So, but here's the thing to remember, is you can opt out, and at a later date, implement something similar. It doesn't foreclose your right to put in a different homestead.
But would that have to be voted on?
It would have to be voted on by the citizens. If you don't opt out, you foreclose the ability to ever opt out. So it's, if you opt in, if you opt out now, you can always add back later, but if you don't opt out, you can, you can never opt out. That's a one-time deal to opt out, and if you don't do it, that's, it's foreclosed as of March 1st.
And even if down the road, the citizens decided to do away from the freeze, I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to think through different scenarios. You know, I like to play devil's advocate a little bit, just playing, walking through scenarios. If we had opted out, and they did that, what would that mean? I guess.
If, if you opt out, and then later you can convince the 33,000 homeowners that are frozen to give up that freeze?
Yeah, I'm not, and I just for the record.
I have some oceanfront property in Arizona I want to sell you.
I am in no way advocating for that. I don't mind the freeze, I just, I like the freeze, but I just wanted to, I like to wait.
But here's what happens, if you were to do that, if you could successfully convince the voters.
Not me personally.
Yeah, no, but you, as a levying authority, if you were to convince them to give up their freeze, and you had opted out, it would mean that their homestead exemption would be based off of 40% of their fair market value, the way it is currently in 140-some-odd counties within the state of Georgia.
On that given year versus this is setting it.
Correct. They would still get their non-frozen, non-floating homestead exemption of either 13.5 or 21.5, depending on which one they qualify for. They would, they would get those, but, but it would not, they would not get the benefit of that freeze in calculating the, what their actual taxable value would be.
But if, what I heard you say, maybe I'm, so if at some point, again, at some point, whatever, the freeze were to go away, this board could come back and do something similar to this.
Yes, absolutely.
At some point in the future.
Absolutely.
And how likely is that?
Again, I'm not advocating for it, I'm just thinking through options.
Well, if you didn't have your tax freeze, then this might be a beneficial.
Yeah, but we have the tax freeze.
Right, but I'm saying.
And we had, we had two mayors who tried to, we voted on two times, with two different mayors, who tried to do that.
Let me throw another scenario at you, and that is you opt out of this one, and at some point, and this is totally make-believe scenario, but I just want to put this out there, so that you guys are considering everything, and you decide to try and thaw that freeze again, with something similar to this particular bill. But instead of the state determining the inflationary factor based on what's going on in Fulton County.
Right, right.
You can do it based on what's going on in Muskogee County.
Because it would be local legislation, and we could.
Exactly, and it would be based on what's happening with our inflation rates.
And taxpayers will still have to vote.
The taxpayers would absolutely still have to vote on that, but it would be a situation of, instead of, you know, if they, if they were to give up their freeze, at least this would be something of a step towards that, without having our inflationary rates be determined by what's happening in Atlanta.
So I guess the people that were advocating for this are probably more areas where there was not some kind of freeze, or some kind of.
I think it's only two, one or two counties that have a freeze, right?
Actually, there's only a few of us that do have freezes. Yeah, and there's some of them that have stuff that's only for 65 and over, there's some counties that already have an inflationary factor built into their freeze, kind of like what we were just discussing, where they have, they have their own inflationary factor built in. And then you have others that have a, that have a flow similar to what's already been described, and so for them, it's just, you know, but the majority of counties don't have anything like this.
And opting out doesn't change any of those other exemptions you showed us?
No, it does not.
Okay.
So let me ask you a question. So the 1,100 that you're saying are underwater, they're, they're not really trying to come from underwater, are they? They want to keep that frozen status based on whatever the property was before they had the catastrophic loss.
They're not allowed to remove it.
They're not allowed?
They're not allowed to remove it. You can't remove it and let your value reset, and then put it back on. They literally would have to move out of their property in order to do so.
Right, but I guess my point is, they were, they probably don't want it reassessed, because it's going to change the, what their, the value that they're benefiting from now, frozen at whatever it was before the catastrophic loss.
No, those 1,100 are currently losing.
Yeah, that's what she said.
It's a detriment to them. They're currently losing under the frozen system. Now, for those with fires, it's, it's, it's to their benefit to stay frozen, because once they finish rebuilding, then they basically have a brand-spanking-new house, as long as they don't change their footprint at the exact same frozen value.
I thought you were describing that group as underwater, so who are the underwater people?
So then we also have the, this, part of the 1,100 are the stragglers from the downturn of 2009 and 2010, the folks that bought at the peak of the market in 2007, 2008, that then their values plummeted, and they have not fully recovered yet.
Correct, correct, correct.
So it's not, it's not exactly 1,100 then?
No. And the other thing is, is we do have a couple of neighborhoods that have declined, and we have some that were, we had nonprofits go in and try and clean up the neighborhood, and people bought their houses for somewhere in the $80,000 range, and the neighborhoods have never recovered, they put their homestead on, and their home values are 15, 30,000 at the best, because of the effect of the neighborhood. But there's only a handful of those.
Thank you so much.
Absolutely.
Thank you. And just a reminder about the timeline, no action can be taken before January 1st of next year. Between January 1st of next year, if we decide we're going to opt out, there'll be three hearings that have to be conducted, and all of it has to be executed in, into the state by March 1st. So nothing can happen before January 1st, but everything has to be completed by March 1st, okay? Thank you so much for your time and for sharing that information.
All right. Now, next, Ms. Buckner, is the education committee.
Our first item is an update on the Jordan College and Career Academy.
Good evening, board members, cabinet members, chiefs, Mr. Bell, Mr. Baker, Mr. Richburg. I want to thank you all for having us tonight. My name is Ryan Hudson, I'm the principal of Jordan Vocational High School, College and Career Academy, and tonight, we are going to do what our bylaws said we're going to do, which is give you our annual update. To give you our update, we've got Mr. Willoughby, who is our CEO, and many of you may not know what a CEO is at a high school, so let me give you a brief job description for Mr. Willoughby. Mr. Willoughby's job is to connect our kids to the outside world, through internships, job opportunities, field trips, field experiences, things like that. So that's what he does for our kids each and every day, and I will tell people, I don't know if this is being recorded, but I don't work too hard, I've got a great team, so let me introduce some of them. I've got Mr. Josie, one of our assistant principals, I've got Ms. Muborn, another one of our assistant principals, and Mr. Hampel, another one of our assistant principals. I also have two of our College and Career Academy board members here tonight, I've got Mr. Martin from the Chamber of Commerce, and Dr. Hiltz with Valley Healthcare. So without further ado, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Willoughby. If you all have any questions, obviously we'll be around, and you all ask away, and we'll be happy to answer them. So get ready, sit back, and enjoy. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hudson. Members of the board, I hope you'll forgive me, this will not be as riveting as tax policy, but I'm going to do my very best. Madam Chair, thank you for the opportunity to present tonight, Dr. Lewis, thank you as well. In summation, the 23-24 school year was a fantastic year for us at Jordan Vocational High School, College and Career Academy, and the 24-25 year is only going to be better. One of the major achievements that we had this past year is that we passed our renewal with the state of Georgia, that is a process that we have to undergo every five years, that was in large part due to the fact that we have such an amazing team, who did a great job of preparing all of that. And before I do get into the meat and potatoes of my presentation, I would be remiss if I didn't honor and acknowledge several members of the team here at McPeck and at the district who were invaluable in that, and who are a key to our ongoing success. This is in no particular order, but I do want to acknowledge first Ms. Victoria Thomas and her CTAE team, as they are stalwart supporters of what we do day in and day out, and we really could not be as successful as we are without them. Would of course like to acknowledge as well our region chief, our fearless leader, Mr. Terry Baker, who is always holding us to account to provide data-driven results into everything that we do. Also would like to acknowledge Mr. Ward Odom, back there and his team at Plant Services. They do an outstanding job of maintaining an almost 100-year-old building that is not without its share of issues, and if you haven't been by to tourists lately, I would suggest you take a look at the great work that they've done. And just as a side note, Mr. Odom was a big help to us just last week on a substantial donation from the folks at Snap-on Tools. Ward, I can't thank you enough for that. I'd also like to acknowledge Ms. Christine Hull, the work she does for us, helping us to attract students to Jordan is tremendous, so Ms. Hull, thank you so very, very much. And Ms. Bloodworth, you know, handling the money at a place like Jordan, it is complicated, and I very much appreciate her team, everybody in finance, what they do with us. And of course, finally, last but not least, Ms. Wright, helping us to spread the gospel of Jordan day in and day out. Thank you so much, Ms. Wright, we appreciate you immensely. So, as we get into it here, I'm not going to read things that you all have already read, but I do like to start off here with this quick quote. I'll give you a dollar if anybody can tell me where this came from. This is a little historical quote from a study that the Muskogee County School District conducted in 1955. This is when we only had a few high schools here in Muskogee County, and I really, really love this, because this quote, in summation, describes what Jordan was then, and in a lot of respects, what Jordan still is today. It is a school for everyone, it is a school that prepares students to achieve their unlimited potential, whether that is going straight into the workforce, whether that's going into the military, or to a college. One of the things that we are endeavoring to do at Jordan, is that we wish to be an elite institution. Now, when I say elite, people oftentimes tend to think of elite in the sense of exclusionary. We actually mean it in the opposite sense. We want to be elite in our inclusiveness, in our ability to be a place where any student, regardless of what their future endeavors may be, that that student can find success with us. That is what a College and Career Academy exists to do, and that is what Jordan has existed to do since 1906, and I'm very proud to say that we are continuing to do today. We of course have a mission, our mission is relatively simple. We want to be a place where teachers have the opportunities to teach, students have opportunities to learn, parents, of course, participate, and ultimately, where the community entrusts us to produce students who are present, prepared, and professional. And I'm very proud to say that I believe we are doing that day in and day out. Here's a little quick message from me, you don't have to read it if you don't want to. I'd actually, believe it or not, this was, Ms. Jones, forgive me, I meant to send this to you as a PowerPoint so it'd animate, but I actually transposed my head over Mr. Tim Vincent there. If you all don't know who Tim is, he was my predecessor, it's big shoes to fill there. I wanted to make sure that we include that photo, because even though Tim's not here tonight, I think it's important to point out that Tim was very much the architect of the College and Career Academy, and it would not be where it is today without him. So my first year following in his footsteps, I'm very proud to do so. Just to give you a couple of milestones for the 23-24 year, of course, we saw just under 1,000 students total enrolled, had a 93% graduation rate, and we saw 228 of our students actually complete a CTAE pathway. So pretty good numbers there, and we're happy with those, but we're not satisfied with them, and you'll see more of that as we continue on. The class of 2024 for us was 164 beautiful, smiling graduates, we did see a pretty equal distribution of those who were enrolled, or planning to be enrolled, employed, or enlisted. I'm really proud of this stat, that almost a third of our graduating class actually participated in our dual enrollment opportunities. As many of you know, we are the only high school that currently transports students to dual enrollment opportunities, so that provides them a great advantage. And then, of course, the 21 who earned additional technical college certificates, very, very proud of those students. Our athletic achievements, you know, we saw four of our students go on to become collegiate athletes. As you all probably remember, Coach Russell Scott was the state wrestling coach of the year, we're very, very proud of him. I didn't put this in my presentation, but you might also know that this has nothing to do with athletics whatsoever, but we did also have one of our, members of our admin team, Ms. Amanda Clope, become the region media specialist of the year, went on to state competition, and very proud of her. Nobody puts things in alphabetical order quite like Ms. Clope. We are just really, really proud of her. We of course saw a number of students go on to the Page One Awards, and very proud that Coach Shereen Cobb ended up coming up, running up there at the Page One Awards, she's doing an amazing job for us each and every day. As far as our CTAE pathways went, we're proud to say that our pathway completers had a 100% graduation rate. That means a student who goes into a CTAE pathway, who completes that pathway, 100% of the time, they are going to finish high school. We did a... We did a three-year average of our EOPA. And I was asked a question by a board member last night, so just in case anybody doesn't know. EOPA stands for End of Pathway Assessment. So when a student completes a pathway, they have to take a test. That is an industry certification test. Those tests are really dictated to us by the Georgia Department of Education. And so we saw about a forty-six percent pathway completion rate. That is in line with other schools in the CCA network because these pathway completion tests, frankly, they're not really all created equal. And I can go into greater detail if you wish to do so. Another element of what we do is work-based learning. You know, we are in the business of economic and workforce development. We had seventy-one of our students last year who worked almost forty thousand hours and earned nearly four hundred thousand dollars. And I had an idea come to me, particularly as we were learning about taxes a moment ago, man, four hundred thousand dollars. Is there any way we could have them tithe on that? Like, is that something else? That would be a decision for you guys, but I'm thinking we get ten percent every year. We might make up for something in that mileage. But very proud of our work-based learning. Again, very, very proud of our dual enrollment students. Did a great job earning two hundred and fifty credits. The additional technical college certificates that they earned ranged from things related to being a CNA. I think we have one young man who earned a certificate in masonry and welding. Just a kind of an array there across the board that they earned through CTC. So our roadmap, where are we looking to go here in the twenty-four, twenty-five year? One of the things that Mr. Baker has charged us with is to thoroughly review our CCRPI. That's the College and Career Readiness Performance Index rating, to look at ways that we can continue to improve in that area. We're also looking to improve our EOPA pass rate. We are gaining more and more business partners year over year. One of the biggest and most important things that we do is we have business partners who take play, really take part in what we do at Jordan. And of course, to continue to offer wonderful dual enrollment opportunities for students, including to expand dual enrollment opportunities that we actually offer in-house. We have a number of different goals here that we're looking to compete, or complete, rather, in twenty-four, twenty-five. These are just some basic metrics for us that we believe are very much attainable, metrics that we are measuring on a regular basis and staying focused on as we go forward, hoping to just continue to provide an outstanding, excellent educational opportunity. And I thought there was another slide here, but it appears not. So hopefully, that has been quick enough for you all. I don't want to take too much of your time. And hopefully, it's updated you on what we're doing at Jordan. You're going to have an opportunity to learn more about this next week when you join us for breakfast. We're very honored to have you and looking forward to serving you a great meal from our culinary arts students. So make room for that. It's going to be delicious. Without any further ado, I'll just open, I don't know if I'm allowed to have questions or not.
Well, first of all, I just want to thank and commend all of our partners, of course, all of our teachers and staff at Jordan, of course, our students and parents for believing in us and giving Jordan that opportunity. Jordan has a very strong, deep history in our community and, quite frankly, throughout the United States, being the very first vocational-based high school in America. But that tradition continues today. And I just want to encourage anybody who might have children who might benefit to really consider this. We, they have tours there on a regular basis to show families what's available to them. Tremendous opportunities and not, and I think we have a tendency to think vocational education or career technical education as kind of dirty and dingy and that kind of thing. It is absolutely not that. Certainly, we have the availability of automotive and those, but we're also working a lot in technology. And the jobs that these kids are going to be able to graduate from, and I like to keep saying, we have the simulators that we are very fortunate to have, the heavy equipment. These are life-changing jobs for kids coming out of high school and their families, their future families. We're talking about generational benefit. So I just could not be more pleased and proud of what we're doing. And we truly are. I keep telling everyone in our school system, we are economic developers. At the end of the day, that's what we're here to do, is to develop our economy locally and throughout our state and continue to keep it the best place to do business in America. And that's happening every day at Jordan, and I could not be more proud. Congratulations.
I just have one point for clarification. Now, did I hear you say that thirty-three percent of the students are on the pathways?
That was thirty-three percent of our graduating class, the twenty-four graduating class, were enrolled in dual enrollment courses.
Dual enrollment?
Correct, yes, ma'am. The vast majority of our students, I'd have to actually pull the number, are participating in CTAE.
I was just wondering, yeah, that's, that's fine. I was just wondering, okay. But all the students at Jordan, when they first come, they establish themselves with a pathway?
Yes, ma'am. So when, when a student comes to Jordan, they actually start off in what's called our Freshman Academy. That's where Mr. Josie is our assistant principal there. So we put them in the Freshman Academy where they're primarily going to be focused on their core academic classes. Some of them may take a CTAE course here and there, but primarily, they enter the pathway in their tenth grade year.
Tenth grade.
Yes, ma'am.
So upon graduation, would all of the students have completed a pathway, or what percentage?
Ideally, yes, ma'am.
Ideally, they would have.
Ideally, they will have completed a pathway.
And then forty-nine percent of those, forty-nine percent of those, are past the test in their pathways?
Yes, yes, whatever the number was that I put there, have actually passed the test. But it, to be clear, you can complete the pathway and not actually pass the test.
Okay.
Yes.
Forty-nine percent.
Two totally different things.
Forty-nine percent pass the test?
Correct, yes.
Okay. Now, and I think I heard you say something about internships.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so during the course of the day, students go, students work, well, it might be in the evening. They work somewhere and get paid?
It's, it's actually both, yes, ma'am. We have a work-based learning program that's very robust. So we have some students who will leave us at noon and will go on to work the rest of the evening. We have some of them that actually will work a little later in the evening, so they won't actually come in until noon the next morning because they've worked a little bit later. But yes, ma'am, that's a big part of what we do. We try to get as many of those students who are ready for that out there in the workplace as soon as possible.
And some people leave Jordan and go straight to work, perhaps from an internship or perhaps from the skill that they have gotten from that pathway?
Absolutely, yes, ma'am. That, that would be the objective for us. We do want to make sure that every student is either, you know, enlisted or enrolled or employed somewhere. So, you know, as long as they're meeting one of those, we're, we're happy. But always great when we see them go straight into the workforce.
And just like Dr. Lewis has just said, with all the opportunities, these kids can go to college or they can go to work from what is provided here at our, at our career and technical college.
Correct.
Where they have options. They can go to college, or they can go to work, or they can go on to pursue what they have studied in, in school.
Correct.
Which is a very good opportunity for students of today to become employed and to, to kind of figure it out in the ninth grade, what they want to do, and then to get that experience.
Ms. Buckner, actually, hearing you say that and hearing something Dr. Lewis mentioned reminded me of something. You know, he mentioned the word vocational, something I had learned shortly after entering this job is when we do hear vocational, we think of dirty trades. The, the actual root word there, vocation, is where we get our word vocal cords from. It's actually a Latin word that means to call out or to cry out. So really, a vocation, if you think about it, is not a job. It's not a profession. It's actually a calling. So when I think about what we do at Jordan is we're there to help students find their calling in life. That thing that is pulling to them, that is saying, this is what you were made for. And that's really what we're endeavoring to help students to achieve every day, starting in the ninth grade. That's exactly right. That's exactly right.
Are there any more questions?
Yeah, that was very well, very well said. And I do hope that, I know I shared with Mr. Willoughby before about one of my friends, their class reunion, they went back to tour the school and had not been in decades and was pleasantly surprised and really amazed at the, the work skill opportunities and that the students are going to have upon graduation. It's one thing to have a CTAE pathway, but it's altogether another to get that certification in that pathway and, and not, and oftentimes not qualify for above-entry-level positions. So I think that is awesome. It is our hidden gem. Keep up the good work. I am super proud of Jordan. Super proud.
Thank you, ma'am.
Nikki. Ms. Tillery?
And one thing I do think is worth mentioning is, as someone who is always trying to hire somebody, the retention rate for these students, especially at Pratt Whitney, what is that? I mean, you need to celebrate that number, the retention rate. I mean, it is, it's amazing. Isn't it like ninety-eight percent or some, I mean?
I, I know it's high. I don't have it right off the top of my head, so I don't want to quote anything, but I do know it's high. I mean, because we're, we're not just, you know, as Madam Chair pointed out, we're not just teaching the skill set. You're also teaching certain soft skills, right? We're teaching, you know, the value of actually entering the workforce. Ms. Lane, who's our work-based learning coordinator, does a, I think, a masterful job of that. I think she's the best in the business. So, yes, that is what we're going to do.
That retention rate, when she told me, I mean, my jaw hit the floor. I thought, goodness. I mean, you don't produce, it's hard to produce that anywhere. And then for y'all to do it to these students and just showing them something completely different to look at and to try, and then for them to love it and go in and be successful. And, yeah, you should email us that because it really is impressive, how many students and how many actually have been there for a long time.
I will be sure to either email it to you or share it to you at breakfast next week.
And I think that retention, that, I think that potential, sorry, retention, retention rate probably is based on their preparedness, you know, when, when you go in and you're prepared, you know, you, you have a step above those who are, who are, who are not prepared or who have not been doing the work.
No, found their calling.
The one, yeah, the ones who have not had that calling. Very good.
Madam Chair, just to be honest, I actually stole that vocational thing from the American Enterprise Institute, so feel free to steal that and use it in any, in any place you'd like. That's perfect. Thank you all so much for your time.
Thank you so much. Madam Chair, that includes, that concludes the, oh, I'm sorry. I thought I had, was that always on there? Okay, we have one more item. And it, oh, yeah, 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 I remember that, yeah. Student progression for, yeah, twenty-two, twenty-five, yeah. That long present, how could I forget? It's a very long presentation.
So the student progression plan is a document that we update annually. We're a little behind this year in getting it updated, but we will be bringing it to you just for information purposes each May going forward.
Yeah, excuse me. Is this the first time we've had this? Because I was looking at it.
No, there's, it's been around for a few years.
Okay, it just seems, is that format, the format is different or something? Because when I was just overwhelmed by all the stuff.
We unleashed W. Skipworth on it, so I'm sure it does look a little different.
It's, it's a document that I requested be developed so that we have, just as it says, a progression. So everybody can read it, parents, students, teachers, but also it uses a counseling tool for our guidance counselors. And it has all the related forms, practices, policies, procedures, and so on like that, pretty much embedded in one place. So there's one place you can find that information related to students and how they matriculate through the system.
I, yeah, I was wondering where, it was the first time I've seen such a document because it was very comprehensive. Very comprehensive. So I was wondering, yeah, okay, that, that sounds pretty good.
So it is procedural in nature. It's a collaboration between Division of Student Services and Division of Teaching and Learning. And, and as I said, we'll bring this annually just as an information piece in May so we can get it out on the website in a timely manner for the upcoming school years going forward.
Okay, very good. I was wondering how you're going to get all that in. Thank you very much for your presentation. All right, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Buckner. Ms. Tillery, Policy Committee?
This is the Revised Board Policy IFB GC. The employee computer and internet used to revise the language to include all current social media platforms is dictated by Board Policy BDC. Policy adoption, this policy has been on the table for thirty days, so we can now vote. Do y'all have any questions about that? If not, I'll return it back over to you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Tillery. Next is our Personnel Committee. Superintendent is recommending the appointment of Elizabeth Lester to serve as principal of Blanchard Elementary School. The information and letter and resume is attached. Are there any questions? She's the current assistant principal.
At Blanchard.
At Blanchard. All right, then the Personnel Report is also attached. Are there any questions regarding the Personnel Report? Ms. Buckner?
Just one quick question. And it was about, I looked at all the resignations that we had. It seems like we had a lot of resignations for October, I think. What's, basically, the bulk of those are, I remember one time we said we had military people moving out. And do we still have that, do we still have, and are people filling it out? That exit, do we still have that and are they filling it out?
We do have an exit survey, and people do fill it out. They don't, they're not required to. So if they opt not to, it's not something that we would make mandatory. But we absolutely make sure that it is available for them and that when we get information, that we pass it along to the appropriate personnel.
Okay, that's what I was wondering because if we had it and if they were using it, we would tend to know why they were leaving or the trends or.
So are you asking, were there any trends indicated for October?
That's exactly what I'm asking. Thank you.
I can go back and take a look. This is, happens to be a time, usually in April and October is the time for PCSing. That, that's one option, but I, I do want to take a closer look at it since I, I can't say if that is the primary, but I can say that this is a timeframe when that would usually happen.
Okay, thank you so very much. And just let us know about that.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, next, Ms. Sly, Discipline Committee?
Thank you, Madam Chair. There are no items submitted for the Discipline Committee.
Thank you so very much. Ms. Frey, Property Report? Get your microphone for me. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Out of eight point zero is a museum report, over fifteen hundred interactions over the month of October. I think the most compelling one is, is involving the juniors and seniors with hands-on experience in the museum. Giving, we were just talking about workforce development and access and internships. I think that's very, very important. As a person who went to high school half a day and worked half a day, makes a difference, really does. So thank you, Waldo Waco. Mariana, continue to keep it up. And move on to our Library Report. Eight point zero two, there was quite a few items in here. The Cub Scouts using the FDR State Park passes for their badges. But I think the, the, the comments from the, from the teenagers at the new library and how cool they think it is and, and how, I guess they don't use the word hip anymore, but just for them to actually go there and, and, and talk with adults, I think it's pretty cool. So it's been, it's, the new library in South Columbus is just absolutely amazing. And again, just participating with the students in, in lunchtime reading and all those kinds of things, that's, that goes a long way. So thank you. And then our last one is eight point zero three, the sale of surplus library books. The Columbus Public Library seeks approval to designate the monthly weeded books as surplus to the Muskogee County School District. These books will be weeded in accordance with the library's collection development policy. Additionally, the library requests permission to dispose of these books through a bidding process, public auction, online auction, donation, donation, excuse me, to other public entities or sale to another government agency at a negotiated fair price. Any questions? If not, that concludes my report. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Frey. Mr. Cantrell, Construction?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Moving on to the first one would be item, agenda item number nine oh one. Double Churches Upgrade Project, this thing's loud. As part of the two thousand twenty-four East Plaza, the Muskogee County School District will upgrade Double Churches Elementary School through multiple means of construction to potentially include renovation, modifications, modernization, and new construction. The Construction Department is requesting the board to approve a construction manager at risk delivery method. The Construction Department will advertise and receive the bids from construction companies to work with the architect to refine and implement the construction documents. Any questions, ladies? Superintendent, Superintendent recommendations approve construction manager at risk delivery method at the Double Churches Elementary Upgrades Project. Moving on to nine oh two, the superintendent recommends SP Architect LLC to evaluate to evaluate, design, and oversee the Double Churches Upgrade Project. Any questions, ladies? Now, we move on to Agenda Item nine oh three. Rothschild Gym Upgrade, the Project Delivery Method. As part of the twenty-four East Plots, Biscayne County School District will upgrade the Rothschild Middle School Gym through multiple means of construction to potentially include renovations, modifications, and modernization and new construction. The Construction Department is requesting the Board to approve a construction manager. The Construction Department will advertise and receive bids from construction companies to work with the architect to refine and implement the construction documents. Any questions on nine oh three, ladies? Kia? Yes, ma'am?
I'm sorry, um, Mr. Cantrell, if you would, go back to nine point zero one.
Yes, ma'am.
I just have a question about the budget for the Double Churches Elementary School. Um, I just wanna make sure for clarity's sake. Um, the construction project budget is thirty-seven million dollars. Um, is it getting like a total overhaul? Will it be like a brand-new school? When you finish with that, can you give me a little insight on, um, what the plan is for Double Churches?
Absolutely. Good evening. So that's the projected, uh, project budget upfront, the overall project budget. So the architect, uh, once engaged, will be going out and evaluating the school to give us the best means for whether it's gonna be new construction or a modernization or modification. So we're waiting for him to evaluate the building. But we know that the projection, no matter which method we use, that project budget is the initial one. And then, of course, when we'll bid it out, we'll actually have the actual budget.
So you're confident that if it ends up?
Do not own.
Please leave it on. So you're confident that if we do end up doing a brand-new school, it will fit within that thirty-seven million dollar budget?
That is correct.
Okay, all right, sounds good.
Moving on. I don't know if I said the Rothschild Gym, Item Number nine oh three. Did I bring that one up? Okay, moving on to the next one. Item Number nine oh four, the Rothschild Middle School Upgrade. As part of the Splosh, the twenty-four Splosh, the Superintendent approves Heck-Bird Shaw Architect Firm to evaluate, design, and oversee the Rothschild Middle Gym Upgrade. Any questions, ladies? If not, we move to the next one. Agenda Item nine oh five, Enclosing Open Campuses Project Delivery Method. As part of the Splosh, the twenty-four Splosh, the School District will start the process of enclosing open campuses through multiple means of construction to potentially include renovation, modifications, modernization, and new construction. Superintendent recommends to Construction Manager at Risk Delivery Method for enclosing open school campuses. Any questions on that? Now, this is, this is what's going on at Arnold right now, isn't it? Where they enclosing the, the schools, where you get into what I call the new building, but it's an old building. Is that?
So at Arnold currently, we have right now is a total, uh, modernization process. So it's very similar, but not exactly the same as enclosing campuses, but very similar.
Um, yes, ma'am, go ahead. Naomi? Get your mic, get your mic.
Something. Oh, I was just gonna say, I'm, I'm so glad we are here with enclosing these, um, open buildings. So about, how many do we have?
Currently, there's, there's approximately twenty-two that we're having open campuses.
Twenty-two, oh, wow, okay. Long as we got the plan yet. I'm glad we're here, thank you.
And Agenda Item nine oh six, Enclosing Open? I'm, I'm sorry.
It's getting true.
I'm sorry. Go over here.
Would you send us just a little more information on like which schools? That is twenty-three million dollars. So which schools are we, um, going to enclose? What is the plan for it?
Absolutely, we can send you additional information.
I know we're bidding that out, but can you send us the detailed information on how we're gonna spend that twenty-three million dollars?
Good evening. So we are in the very early stages of this process. So in order for us to determine which schools will be first, we need the architect to be involved. So as the Agenda Item reads, this is the beginning, we're starting. We don't think that we'll be able to enclose all of the campuses with that first initial wave, but this is how we're going to start and we continue to roll this on into the next East Plots as well. So until the architect comes along, we can't tell you which schools we're going to be able to start with. They need, we need some help with that in order to get a better plan.
So, so what you, in order for you to come up with the twenty-three million dollars, you did like an estimate of what it's cost in the past and where we wanna go?
That's based upon the amount of the East Plots campaign that we dedicated to this project. Exactly.
Perfect, okay, sounds good.
I guess.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, is there a reason why we're doing one architecture firm for all twenty? I mean, versus parcelling it out some?
So some of the enclosure of campuses will be involved in other larger projects. And so this particular architect is going to help us with those campuses that are not a part of a larger project. For example, Double Churches Elementary is not an enclosed campus. Enclosing it will be a part of its project. And so we wanna make sure that we have an architect that is focusing on those schools that don't have another project involved that will enclose its campus.
So that's maybe not the whole twenty?
That's correct. Say that question again.
I'm sorry, when he said that there was gonna be twenty or twenty-two schools affected by the closing, um, initiative, I guess that's what I was wondering, is if this architecture firm is gonna do all twenty-two or is that just only the ones of those twenty-two that didn't have more going on on their campus?
So this architecture firm is gonna help us through the initial assessment to determine which schools will go in the order that we're gonna accomplish them.
Oh, okay, so they're, okay.
Any more questions? Microphone, please.
So, I'm just trying to figure out what that means in terms of what Ms. McCray asked. So this architect will coordinate with schools that have ongoing projects. And the schools with the ongoing projects, their open, um, their openness will be part of their projects, right?
They're separate, so.
So, yeah, I'm, I'm just trying to get, I know this, like, you have said here, twenty-three million for, I asked the question, how many? Answer was twenty-two. So in that twenty-two included, I think I just heard you say, are, uh, uh, projects that already have designated, um, architects of other jobs that have another project, like you said, Arnold. For example, Arnold, Arnold is already going, ongoing construction. And, uh, their school, their school openness will be done by the person in charge of that school. So would that take us down to twenty-one? So, where there are schools that have construction, they are not included in that twenty-two that you said. So maybe we'll chip off twenty-one, twenty. I'm just trying to see with that twenty-three million dollars. I know you said it's done with the Splosh, but I'm, I'm just trying to figure out, is it twen, have, have we looked at how many? Well, I guess it, that's all right, keep going. It doesn't make any difference, they're all gonna get done and that whole pro. Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, that, everybody, everything's gonna get done, so I'm sorry. I was just trying to get an idea of if, if it was twenty-two, but anyway, it's all gonna get done, okay. Keep going.
Okay.
Thank you.
No problem. Any more questions?
Yeah, I just have one more question. Once, um, you've met with the architect and we have identified each school, each project, how much it's gonna cost individually, then you will bring that back to the Board for approval, correct?
That is correct.
So this is just helping you get started and you know you can spend up to that amount?
That is correct.
Okay, perfect, sounds good.
Any more, one more here. Um, Item Number nine oh six, Enclosing Open Campuses Architect Selection. The Superintendent recommends approve two WR Architectural Firm to evaluate, make recommendations of construction means, design, and oversee enclosing open school campus projects. Questions? Ward, are you gonna have a presentation now on nine oh seven? Okay, that's what I thought. Uh, Ward's gonna come up, do us our November Construction Status Report. Ward?
All right, good evening. Uh, so we have the November, uh, Construction Status Update. Uh, this is gonna be a very short presentation, uh, it's because we're closing out the twenty-twenty East Plots, so the projects are very much winding down. But to give everybody an update, uh, I wanna remind everyone that Hardaway, this is the rendering of the front entrance. Um, again, uh, expected to, um, complete in winter twenty-four, twenty-five, which is very soon. About another month and a half, we'll be complete out there. So that is the, where we currently are from the front, uh, where it stands. And I kinda gave you a side for depth perception, uh, where you have. So that's the front office area. Um, it's looking really good out there, so we're about a month, month and a half away from completing that. It's gonna be a complete transformation out there. The Kendrick Edition Upgrade, uh, this is the rendering of what the front looked like or looked like in the rendering. Uh, that's a aerial shot from the view circling where the main office addition is at and obviously the front driveway entrance. Here we have an up close, so yes, that might look like a rendering, but that's not, that's actually a picture taken. So it is, uh, the way it looks, um, it looks really good out there. Um, the school's very proud, the community would be proud of this. Um, here is a shot, I'm gonna kinda give a little tour of the inside of that as we're kinda, well, it is complete. We're getting ready to move them in, uh, next week just to get into the office space. Uh, this is the front secure vestibule area, so when you come into the front, this is the front office that the parents and students and everyone sees. Uh, this is, I kinda took a shot just as you see the office's space and the furniture up front. This is kind of the standard what one, uh, office looks like in the front. Then you have, this is the copy room with the, the vault door and the copier and the cabinets. So that's what, you know, continuing on, you can see the floor that's in there. Uh, this is the conference room. I took two angles, this, this one, so you can kinda see the, in the, in the actual side with the technology on it. But you see the ceiling is very modern looking, uh, and they're gonna have some, yes, absolutely. Uh, then that's, that's it for Kendrick. So we moved over to our final project that we're currently working on is the Midland, uh, Middle School Athletic Field Phase Four Project. So you'll see the field here. Um, Mr. Bowles, I believe we're actually playing a game out there tomorrow, uh, if I'm not mistaken. But to the right over there, you see the concession building, uh, so that's a, another great addition to, to that school. And then the other projects that we have ongoing are the secure vestibule projects, which we have, uh, Phase Four. I'll be presenting, uh, GMP hopefully in December to the group and, uh, those projects will be completed winter twenty-five, twenty-six for Phase One of the secure vestibule projects. And as always, we thank the citizens for passing the East Plots cause none of these projects could be done without that penny being passed. So thank y'all.
Thank you, Ward. Madam Chair, unless there's any questions, um, that's all for the Construction Committee. Yes, ma'am, go ahead, Kia, I'm sorry.
I have a question about Kendrick High School, um, and the facilities plan. Is there any plan to redo the locker rooms at Kendrick?
So currently in the facility plan, there is no, nothing to do with the locker room. Uh, I can tell you that Kendrick is on year one of the painting plan that we presented uh, throughout the, the component of the building, cause that, that wasn't done as part of the front construction upgrade project. But, uh, the painting will be done, which will include the locker room.
Yes, it's in need of some repair.
Absolutely, yes.
Okay, sounds good, thank you so much.
All right, all right, with Finance Committee, Ms. Chambers, if you keep your mic on.
Yes, we have ten items under the Finance Committee and I hope you all have reviewed them already. Um, ten point zero one is Purchase Exception A and B. Um, there are two items attached. One is a subscription and the other one is an Improvement Network Membership for Cognia. Any questions about either of those, Mr. Cantrell?
Ma'am, that's all.
Do you have a question?
I'm sorry.
No problem, okay. Hearing no questions, I'll move on to ten point zero two, Purchase Exception C. This has to do with maintenance. It is actually Infinite Campus Purchase, two hundred and seventy-three thousand, five hundred and forty-eight dollars and twenty cents. Any questions about that? Okay, our third item, ten point zero three is Purchase Exception D. These are just renewals. One is for crayon software, um, and one is for CBM Solutions. This is the, um, gym floor refinishing services. Ten point zero four is Purchase Exception F. You'll see a list, there are five items there, from two-way radios to audio, audiovisual equipment, some athletic equipment and networking equipment for our new school, Berry A. Buckner Academy. Any questions, Board Members? Hearing none, I'll go on to ten point zero five, Purchase Exception G. These are our professional services, so you'll see things like Just Breathe for Kids, The Works, Power School Group. There are four items. Okay, Ms. Buckner?
Uh, and I just wanted to know if anybody here, um, knows about the Just Breathe for Kids?
Yeah, we do it every year. Yeah, we do it every year.
I saw it, it's, uh, it connects kids with each other, each other, where it creates their own calm. It navigates the world with confidence and awareness. So, have, have we had this be, before? It's okay.
Yes.
So, is it, is it effective?
Mindfulness.
Yeah, I was just wondering if it was, cause when I first got it, but then when I looked back down, it creates with, uh, each other, creates them with their world, creates their own calm. And I was just wondering about effectiveness, I, it sounds like.
I'll get you the details on the effectiveness. It's actually for Lonnie Jackson. Oh, I'm sorry, Chris Dreiman, Director of Federal Programs. Um, I can get you the detail on the effectiveness and how it's working. Um, it's actually a part of, of a program that Lonnie Jackson, um, started last year and they, and they've continued into this year.
This year, yeah, I, I saw it was like a fifteen-week thing, you know? And I was, I, I was just thinking when it says creates your mind, you know? I was just trying to see if it was effective in terms of what the goals were. And I'm sure it is, I, I just want to know how that works, you know?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am, and we can certainly get you the details.
All right, thank you so much.
You know, help with behavior and stuff like that, yeah. Okay, hearing no further questions about ten point zero five, we'll move on to ten point zero six. These are your purchase order, order increases for professional services. And I have a question about this one. Uh, most of them are a five thousand dollar increase and it specifically names a person. Is this a sort of a raise or just a increase in, um, their services? Or what is, each one of them is in five thousand dollar increments for each person individually?
Um, these are for services that are provided at, um, Woodall, right? And they're not raises, they're just additional services that they will be able to provide during the year. That, you know, they're, it, what they had only got them so far during the year and this will carry them farther into the year with those services.
Okay, so are they serving more students maybe?
I think it's just serving it longer throughout the year.
Longer period of time, okay. Perfect, sounds good. All right, any further questions? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to ten point zero seven. Those are our sole source and volatile purchases. They are attached. Lots of things from Apple and of course, Fuel. Item ten point zero eight is, um, those are the new budgets for fiscal year twenty twenty-five. Any questions about those? You'll see a, um, grant given from the Mill District. Attached. Any questions about that? Okay, hearing none, we'll go on to ten point zero nine. These are our budget adjustments and there are several of those attached. And I have a, a couple of questions just for clarity on these. Um, if you look under Division of Teaching and Learning, um, it looks like we receive one point seven million dollars less than we thought we would in school improvement grants, but then we receive one point five million more in improvement for academic achievement grant. But then there's a reallocation for system-wide, um, consolidation of funds of seven point two million dollars. So those are the three areas that I sort of just. So those are the three areas that I sorta just need some clarification on what actually happened with those federal funds coming in, and how are we going to make those adjustments? And, and then why did we need to adjust for seven point two million dollars?
So on the consolidation of funds at the seven point two million, uh, that is actually a part of the carryover that Title One received. So that was a part of the reallocation, um, that's added to the consolidation of funds. We also went through Title Two and Title Four that allow transferability of funds, which added to the consolidation of funds. The Title Four Academic Achievement Funds was actually the first budget that went in, was a projection. And these are the official allocations. Um, again, and then with the consolidation of fund, carryover funds got added to Title One, um, which caused the increase for consolidation of funds.
And when you say carryover funds, you means the funds that we did not use in the previous year?
Yes ma'am, correct.
Were carried over to this year?
Yes ma'am, correct.
Alright.
And then the school improvement, is that the other one for the one point seven million? Those funds actually got cut. We got, we learned from U S Ed, and then we were notified by Godot, um, that those funds were actually cut completely. Uh, we go into each year with those projections. Back in the spring, we were notified that we could expect those funds. But then a couple of months later, we were notified that they had been cut completely.
So what does that mean for us as far as programming is concerned? If we thought we had one point seven million dollars in school improvement, and now we don't? Are there any type of, um, programs that would be cut because of that? Or do we have, of course, room or a plan to replace those funds from another category?
So what we at- what we attempted to do in regards to that was try to pull as much as we could from Title Two and Title Four to transfer into Title One, to try to get as much money to those schools as possible. However, that gets spread out over all schools. Um, in regards to those Title One School Improvement Funds, those were specifically for the state identified schools. Um, so there's nothing specifically from a federal grant point that we could, you know, try to come up with another plan for those. We, unfortunately, we just have to work with what we get from allocation from the state.
Do we know, um, how that will affect their programs at those schools that are already in a, a needy position? We don't know at this time?
We don't know at this time. So, I mean, it's, it's, it's.
I'm sure their principals are trying to figure it out, because then they have to readjust their Title One budget as well, so.
They do, cuz I mean, I mean, one, one point seven, that's a, that's a lot of ground to make up. Yes, it is.
It is. I, it, w- once you find out, I would like to know if they're, yes, Tim, Dr. Smith.
So that's coupled also with the ESSER, um, funds ending. And so they had to make some adjustments just with staffing, um, that they had within their school. A lot of them was through intervention teachers. However, the four, four CSI elementary schools got the literacy support coach grant. So that replaced, um, some of those funds, but they, they were specifically, had to be used for, um, literacy coaches.
Okay, okay.
I think that I will never adjust to, um, school districts in particular, I'm sure other state agencies feel the same way, getting confirmation of funding and then, uh, uh, never mind.
Just pull back, yeah.
That, that's hard to adjust.
Very hard. But I'm glad, I wanna thank you guys for making those adjustments with other grants, because the program is, is what's important to us. And that the schools have the resources that they need in order to make the students successful. So that's, that's great, that they were able to use the literacy grant, so. This time, you're exactly right. You're exactly right.
The literacy grant is for the next three years, so that's, this point in time is guaranteed.
Okay, very good. Okay, alright, thank you so much, and thank you, um.
Language is important.
Appreciate it.
But now, that's pretty much what y'all do all the time. We can, every month, make budget adjustments. Things happen all the time, and y'all are continually making a budget adjustments, because the budget is a projection, so you have to adjust all the time. You have to make budget adjustments, because you're working from a projection.
Okay, any further questions specifically about the budget? Okay, hearing none, I'll move on to ten point ten. Um, those are our donations, and we wanna thank our citizens for, um, realizing that schools can't do it alone, and for making those, um, donations each and every month. And ten point eleven, those are our financial statements. And, um, you'll find those attached for the month of September. Okay, hearing no questions, I'll return it back over to you, Ms. Pat.
Thank you so very much. Are there any good order, anything, any requests? This has been great. Alright, Dr. Lewis, take us on.
Yep, yep. Well, we had the privilege of hosting State Superintendent Richard Woods today as he came to Columbus to recognize eighteen of our schools for their growth and proficiency, and/or proficiency in math and/or, uh, literacy. Uh, and they all received banners from Superintendent Woods that they can have in perpetuity, so they can continue to add as they continue to receive these awards going forward. And those schools were Diamond Magnet Academy, which also received its STEM recertification today. So that was great. Uh, but also were Eagle Ridge Academy, Downtown Elementary Magnet Academy, Midland Academy, Brayton McCullar School of the Arts, Blanchard Elementary, Brett David, uh, Davis Elementary, Lonnie Jackson Academy, Columbus High School, Aaron Cone Middle School, Allen Elementary, Blackman Road Middle, Double Churches Middle, Matthews Elementary, Midland Middle, Richards Middle, and Veterans Memorial Middle School. So we congratulate all of their schools and faculties and staffs for, and their entire school community for all they've done to, uh, improve in the areas of growth and proficiency in math and literacy. Also, this is National School Psychology Week, and we wanna thank all of our school psychologists for their valuable work, uh, working with our school communities and ensuring the well-being of our students socially, emotionally, and academically. Thank you for all your efforts. That's all I have.
Alright, then we will adjourn. We'll wave and adjourn. All in, wave by.